From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting, originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue in Bakersfield, California. Grounded in ideas, energy, and innovation, Kern County's vision is to be a driving force for the world's fifth-largest economy. And our mission is to exceed expectations of the communities we serve, changing the way they feel about government, those who manage it, and the services it provides. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Okay, good afternoon, Board to reconvene. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Supervisor Peters?
Here.
Supervisor Scribner?
Here.
Supervisor Flores?
Here.
Supervisor Couch?
Here.
Supervisor Perez?
Here.
Thank you. Good afternoon, and welcome to the Tuesday, June 23 p.m. session of the Kern County Board of Supervisors. Before I move to Margot Weisand for a report from closed session, I would like to read an announcement today in closed session regarding item number 75 of this morning's agenda. I'm happy to report by unanimous 5-0 vote that the Board of Supervisors appointed Jose Lopez as our next county Veterans Service Officer effective June 17, 2023. Mr. Lopez has led our Veterans Service Department as the interim Veterans Services Officer since February 11 of this year. Mr. Lopez began working for the county in 2015 with the Department of Human Services and was promoted to the Veterans Service Department in 2017, where he has served in the supervisory and management capacity for the last five years. Prior to his employment with the county, Mr. Lopez served in the U.S. Army from 2005 to 2011, and the Board offers its congratulations to Mr. Lopez and thanks him for his service to our country and leadership in this critical role, serving our county's veterans. We look forward to continuing our work with Mr. Lopez, and would like to give him a moment to say a few words if he so chooses. Welcome, come on down.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Madam Clerk, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, and Mr. Allsop. I humbly accept this appointment and your vote of confidence. I am excited to lead your department and the dedicated team that we have. I am truly thankful to everyone who has supported me and taught me along the way, Directors Taylor and Dannons, Administrative Coordinator Kahana Gonzalez, my soon-to-be wife and our family, just to name a few. I could go on, I'm sure. I look forward to continuing the great work we do for our veteran community. I thank you again.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll be considering the consent agenda. Agendas are located at the tables near the... Oh, I'm sorry. Margot, report from closed session.
Good afternoon, Board members. This morning, you met in closed session on items number 74 through number 83. Chairman, as you have already reported out as to number 75, there is nothing else to report with the exception of item number 78, and that report is that, as you know, Chief Probation Officer T.R. Miracle has announced his upcoming retirement. The chief probation officer is appointed by the Superior Court, and the Superior Court invited the Board of Supervisors to have two board members serve on the selection committee for Chief Miracle's replacement. Today in closed session, the Board appointed Supervisors Perez and Scribner to serve on that selection committee.
Thank you. Thank you for that report. Okay. Okay, now we'll begin considering the consent agenda. Again, agendas are located at the back of the room for anyone wishing to follow along. All items listed with a CA above the item number are considered to be routine and non-controversial by county staff. County items will be considered first. They may be adopted by one motion. If a member of the audience wishes to comment or ask questions regarding an item of the consent agenda, they may do so prior to a vote being taken. A member of the Board may remove any item from the consent agenda, and it will be considered in its listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the Board concerning the item before action is taken. At this time, I will read the consent agenda items. Starting on page two, items three, four, and five. Page three, items six through 12. Page four, items 13 through 20. Page five, items 21 through 26. Page six, items 27 through 34. On page seven, items 38 through 41. On page eight, items 42 through 49. On page nine, items 50 through 56. On page 10, items 57 through 64. Page 11, items 65 through 73. And that concludes the consent agenda items. So at this time, is there any member of the public that would like to discuss? Any of you can make your way forward. Come on, sir.
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make comments on item number 19.
Sure.
My name's Kevin Barnes. I served as the Solid Waste Director in Bakersfield for 25 years, retired recently. I have the following comments to make on item 19 without any commercial interest as a concerned citizen. This item adds $3.4 million to an existing contract to bring to a total of $4.7 million. The purpose is to develop a waste diversion plant for complying with the Senate Bill 1383, which has been a hot topic lately. But the $4.7 million only gets a design to see if it can be permitted. We could project somewhere near $100 million construction after that. This vendor has just been approved for a $67 million contract in their hometown in Tennessee. It's the only one we can find on the Internet. So besides huge capital costs and operating costs that go with that, some concerns are that the county and its haulers in several cities are already investing millions of dollars in three-color container systems. I'm sure you're all familiar with that from recent events. This type of plant, where it's intended to just take the mixed garbage and turn it into something great, circumvents the need for that three-color system. So if this is to go ahead, it kind of wastes the millions and millions of dollars of effort that's undergoing right now. The other thing is, in 45 years of solid waste management in my career, public and private both, I have studied a lot of these proposals. I've entertained many, many, many over the decades. There always seems to be a catch, not to be negative, but we refer to it as turning garbage into gold. Not really possible usually because of various constraints. This one kind of fits that pattern. I don't mean to negate this particular company. But if it is indeed the great waste solution that it's proposed to be, why does it take public dollars to make these things happen? If it's that good, the garbage companies I've worked for would be jumping on it, okay? This agreement alludes to the material being made out of this as fuel for perhaps the cement plants that we have in Kern County in place of coal. That's a good idea, except that that can be so challenging and so expensive on top of the other money that it could be very daunting. It really needs to be vetted out. And here's why. When our valley lost its 20 wood-fired electric plants over the last decade because solar replaced it, we could not find places to send wood chips. We were desperate for that collectively, all of us working together. And I personally worked with many, many companies and the Air District to see if we could find just a wood chip solution to energy. It doesn't work because of emissions. So if we can't do that with pure wood, how can we do it with stuff derived from mixed garbage? Not in my experience. Finally, the Little Hoover Commission is either drafting or releasing a report about its urging CalRecycle to kind of back off on 1383 for a while. I don't know if you've seen that. I've attached the first page of the executive summary, and I call attention to this top of the right-hand column, a temporary pause. So there's a lot of groundswell in California that is expressing the near impossibility of this 1383 compliance. And so I don't think that it's prudent at this time to move forward and jump into more millions of dollars that will obligate us to perhaps $100 million in future capital costs to duplicate the systems that are already being put in place. I admire what staff is doing. They try really hard. They have a really hard job. I used to do that, too. But I don't think this is the time to move forward with this. I think it deserves greater study. I'm not one to just create studies, believe me. I'd rather get things done. But this is so expensive and so risky on so many fronts, with air permitting and material management on the back end, toxics that are a surprise, by the way. How do you manage all that? It's not a quick and quick solution. So I understand from our local task force in solid waste that it has not been vetted out there. It hasn't been discussed much. So I'd recommend that you maybe convene a special working group if it was somehow not fit for the local task force on solid waste. Perhaps a working group because the cities may get really angry if they have their systems replaced. Businesses are going to be paying the bill for this ultimately, and so are the ratepayers. So I suggest further study on this. I can veristat the numbers and email at the bottom. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. Appreciate your expertise and background on this issue.
Thank you.
Do any board members have comments before we go to public comment on this issue? No. Mr. Chernipseed, before you take the mic, I just wanted to allow our Director of Public Works, Josh Chamblin, to see if you might want to comment on this.
My comments on the same issue?
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Michael Chernipseed, I represent the Kern County Tax Payers Association. It seems to me if the only plant of this kind is in Tennessee, it might as well be in Mars. We live in California. We have extremely tough air rules. We have the Air District, and we're looking to throw $3.5 million at a chance. You know, I didn't think we were so flushing money that we can start playing roulette with that kind of money without a proven model to follow, and especially if somebody did not go back and see that and explore that would actually meet all California standards. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Chernipseed. Any other speakers on this item? Okay, before we move forward, Director, would you like to say a few words on this item?
Thank you, Chairman, and members of the Board. While it's fresh on my mind, I'll respond to Mr. Chernipseed. Our staff has been back to Tennessee numerous times to vet this project and to see what they've built out there. So we do have that experience. We've seen it on that front. And like Mr. Barnes said, you know, this has been a hot topic in front of your Board. The reason that we're continuing to go down this path is because the state only wants to tighten these regulations year after year. This is what they're after. And this is considered a high diversion facility. And so we're preparing for the event that this is where it's headed. And what we're doing here is we're not asking for the facility funding. What we're saying is we want to be prepared in the event. And so we're moving to that phase now where we're going to get biddable plans and specifications in the event that this is how we want to move. I know it's been an indication from your Board that the cost on the generator or the cost otherwise on the homeowner and the renter is a big deal to us in the county. And this gets us in a position where we can have less than three cart services, like Mr. Barnes said, and that, you know, that overall could lower the cost on the homeowner. You know, we could go to that two-or-one-cart system. Less pickups means, you know, less cost to them in the long run. So that's what we're pursuing. And the cost of this is an expensive facility because they're not they're not used yet. But this is what California is kind of saying they want to go to. So we want to be prepared. There's a lot of credits out there that can lower the cost. You know, we foresee a lot of renewables credits that we would qualify for that would reduce the overall cost on this facility over years. And CalRecycle has responded to the Little Hoover Report, saying this isn't going to stop them from implementing the program at this point. So while we, you know, have our own opinions, that's what's come from the state level. Just reminds you that just last December, that the grand jury recommended that we also proceed down this route. So we're just carrying out the wishes of the grand jury's report.
Thank you. I welcome the Little Hoover's recommendations. Let's see if the legislature will heed or not. Time will tell. Okay, we're still under the public comment on consent.
Chairman, could I ask a question real quick?
Sure.
For Director Chamblin. Sorry, I was trying to catch you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see you check in. Sorry.
I appreciate everything you said and working on a solution that's going to help ease the, you know, the transition into this new route that the state's forcing us into. But would this, timing-wise, if we put just a brief pause on it, just so we can kind of understand it a little bit better and dig into it, would that jeopardize what Public Works is doing with this right now if we held off momentarily?
Supervisor Peters through the chair. I don't see a downside to that. We're going to come back to your Board. You know, as we did, we kind of... The motion from the last time we spoke when we were up here was that we wanted a different route for this next upcoming year. So we are coming back to your Board soon with some proposals and ways that we can move toward compliance. This high diversion facility is not the, like I said, this is not what we're going to be doing in the near future. So if it makes you more comfortable to dig into this a bit, that would not change our current plans.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you. And so this is still a time for any member of the public to comment on consent agenda items only before we move to adopt. Okay, seeing that, I'll bring it back to the Board. I believe Supervisor Peters has to make a statement or would like to.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I would just like to note that I'm going to be abstaining from item three on the consent agenda due to a conflict of interest, and I would like to ask Clerk of the Board to please record my abstention. I will still vote on the motion to approve the consent calendar, although my vote will only be for those remaining items. I have this. Okay, thanks. Sorry, first conflict I had. So it's a conflict regarding an interest in real property nearby. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Couch?
Thank you. Mr. Chamblin, can I ask you a question? We're on back to item 19. I want to follow up on what Supervisor Peters just said. When are you planning on coming back with whatever you just... When you were answering him, you said you're coming back with something else in the fairly near future.
So we have internal meetings planned for as soon as next week with stakeholders in the county and county upper management. And so I can't say for certain...
You don't have a hard date yet?
No, but it's... And we want to get the ball rolling by August. That's our goal, like back into the process by August of this year.
Okay, so do you see any issue deferring or continuing item 19? It's 19, right?
Correct.
To whenever you come back with that?
It's possible. I was just informed by staff when I sat down. I may have misspoke. There are grants associated with this. There's a timing here for grants that is, you know, next-year deadline kind of thing for applying for these grants. And in order to do that, you have to have these documents completed. And so the staff was informing that it's somewhere in the $20 million grant funding that could be in jeopardy if we don't move forward with this. But I don't know if there's that much of a time crunch, but that just is something that's out there that staff informed me of. So it could... I think we could bring it at that time as well.
Well, you're certainly free to bring it sooner. I was just trying to get a broader discussion of maybe your larger vision and a larger project at one time.
Right. It's my intent to bring this, yeah, to your Board as soon as we can and kind of lay out the, you know, all options and our proposed, our recommendations for this year specifically, but long-term. We believe this kind of technology will help into drive down costs for consumers.
So Mr. Barnes also asked a question. I think he was referring to SWAMAC?
Correct.
Solid Waste Management Advisory Committee. This item did not go through that committee yet. Is there a reason? Would you normally do it that way, or is...
I believe that it did go through that committee. I have Chuck McGee here, who is more... He's more involved in that discussion.
The television star? Chuck?
Well, he might be after today. But if you would like to get into specifics of it, but staff has informed me that this has gone through SWAMAC.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion on consent.
So moved.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, if I may, before we... Okay, so currently, item 19 is still on the table for us to approve. And so if the Board's wanting this to be, rather than continue it where we have to choose a date, if we refer it back to staff and they can bring it forward when they are ready to do so, if there's some additional information that the Board wanted on the item. And so, Mr. Chamblin, is that... You referenced these grants, and we don't want to jeopardize the potential of landing tens of millions in grant funds. And so next year is, you know, is a little... I don't know. I'm not sure if we have clarity on how long we can wait before we make a decision on this item and still be eligible to pursue those grants. So can somebody give us some idea of that timeline?
Yes, sir, I can. And thank you for the opportunity. This plant has been under review.
The clerk's going to make you identify yourself, I think.
Oh, I'm sorry. Chuck McGee with the Public Works Department. This facility has been under review by us since 2018. It has been vetted in numerous times and trips back there. There are additional plants being built by them right now. We have had HF&amp;H review it for permitability. What's in the comments is not quite correct. We are not making fuel. We are using it... We are using it to go to an AD system. The plant does not use new technology. It uses better technology and better systems that have been available in the past. We've already been told that this type facility is fully permissible, as is by HFNH who did the review. What Director Champlin's been talking about is in the Inflation Reduction Act from the federal government, they are very interested in getting plants built that produce what's called renewable information numbers. This plant does that. And if you can get one of these under construction prior to the end of next year, they will pay one-third of the construction cost. If we miss this timeline right now, we will be in very hard straits to get to that point. We want to get that funding. That funding is significant and it's available. It's not even competitive. You get in construction, you fill out the forms and you're there. That's why we're asking that we move forward with this. We had planned to get it done in December. We're six months behind at this point and we need to move forward if at all possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, having heard that, I'm going to second the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
Thank you, Zach.
Okay, we have a motion, second, members cast your vote, please.
Can I, can I make a comment?
Yeah, sure. Before we vote.
And maybe this goes for everybody, but Mr. McGee, I can appreciate everything you just said. You've been working on it for how many years?
Since 2018.
Since 2018. I think I've known about it since about that long, but I knew about this item since Thursday. So I'm asking department heads to take a look at the board through maybe a different lens than you normally do. Those of us, and I should say it this way, we on the board like to have adequate time to review items and feel comfortable about our votes. Thank you.
Thank you. Well said. Okay, members cast your vote.
The motion is approved. Four ayes, one opposed. Supervisor Couch.
Okay, thank you. This, moving on to item number one under public presentations. This is a portion of the meeting that is reserved for persons to address the board on any matter not on this agenda, but under the jurisdiction of the board. Board members may respond briefly to statements made or questions posed. They may ask a question for clarification, make a referral to staff for factual information, or request staff to report back to the board at a later meeting. Also, the board may take action to direct staff to place a matter of business on a future agenda. Speakers are limited to two minutes. Please state and spell your name before making your presentation. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name's Ralph Robles. I am a veteran. In a December 2019 letter to Dominion Voting Systems, Democrat Senators Elizabeth Warren, Ron Hayden Wyden, Amy Klobuchar, and Congressman Mark Pocan warned about reports of machines switching votes, undisclosed vulnerabilities, and improbable results that threaten the integrity of our elections. Senators Elizabeth Warren, Amy Klobuchar, and Ron Wyden issued a formal complaint in 2019 to Dominion Voting Systems. Among the complaints were allegations of vote switching. In 2018 alone, voters in South Carolina were reporting machines that switched their votes after they inputted them. Scanners were rejecting paper ballots in Missouri and busted machines were causing long lines in Indiana. In addition, researchers recently uncovered previously undisclosed vulnerabilities in nearly three dozen backend election systems in 10 states. In Texas, Dominion Voting Systems were rejected three times by experts from the Texas Secretary of State and Attorney General's Office. Not mentioned in this report is that you, excuse me, you can find a YouTube presentation by none other than Hillary Clinton complaining about the voting machines and warning that they are susceptible to hacking and diverting the vote counts. I urge you to go back and review and approve a, what do you call it, forensic audit of the last two elections.
Thank you. Okay, next speaker, please. Come on down.
My name is David McGeeath, last name is M-C-G-E-A-T-H. And I, I live on Ward Five area. And I'm requesting that they clean up the graffiti in the neighborhoods, more street lights, and that's all over Bakersfield. I came from Orange County in 2012. Of course Anaheim, they have their own power company. But they need to do something about street lights everywhere in Bakersfield because it's too dark, the streets, people are getting killed, and they really need to address that. Maybe solar lights or whatever in the street. Another issue that concerns me is the well-being of my neighbors and the kids that live around the neighborhood. And I'm referring to Bernard and Haley in between Haley, Flower, and Bernard. There's only a sidewalk on the west side, but not on the east side. I see kids and parents walking across the street. And I really recommend they put crosswalks in that area between Bernard and Flower on Haley. They need to put two crosswalks, you know, so kids can cross the street and walk on the sidewalk until they can put sidewalks up on the east side. Also, I recommend if they could put four ways blinking lights at the stop sign on Bernard and Haley, because there's a lot of traffic that goes through there and I've seen people drive right through there. And cleaning up vacant lots around the neighborhood, that would be well appreciated also. And let's, and that's it for now.
Thank you, Mr. McGee. Did you want to leave your contact information for staff so you can be contacted with your iPhones?
Yeah, my phone number is 714.
I mean, I mean, leave it here.
Oh, okay.
Chairman, can I intervene?
Yeah, sure. Supervisor Perez.
Mr. McGee, thank you for your time. And as we spoke a few moments ago and, and indicated, the squeaky wheel gets the oil. And I'm so glad you're here to highlight the tremendous need on the east side still. Lots of places in the county, to your point, that are in great need. But you're a voice for the east side and I really appreciate it. I know I connected you. First, Mr. Turnipseed connected you to me initially and then to my chief of staff. So it was really good that you came here to be heard because you immediately got connected to the right people. We're now in touch and we're going to be working with you moving forward. But I want to thank you for being here and being a different voice for the east side and helping us see that, you know, the needs are everywhere and by all kinds of constituents, if you will, all working towards the same goal.
Yeah, thank you. I also, I'm sure everybody's aware of the illegal fireworks. I think if they get drones out there and also find the people that's doing this, especially on Haley, we get a lot of illegal fireworks. It needs to be resolved. And that's something that it should be taken care of right away.
Thank you. So your two minutes is expired now, but if you want to leave your contact information discreetly with staff, we can follow up. And just so you know, we have a drone and we have, we're on full alert come Fourth of July with our fire department. And we work closely with the city to, to route that the best we can. And where I live, it's like Vietnam.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. McGee. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Ma'am, I'm so sorry. I saw you sit down when he was coming up. In no way was I wanting to him to come ahead of you. I just didn't want him to miss his opportunity to be heard.
I know, that's totally fine.
My apologies.
First, I wanted to just make a quick, Amy Espinoza, Kern County Auditor, Controller, County Clerk, register our voters. Mr. Robles made a comment earlier about Dominion. I just want to assure your board, the people in this chamber, the voters of Kern County, and the public in Kern County in general, that in Kern County, we have not seen any type of vote changing, any type of discrepancies with the Dominion machines that we use here. And so I just wanted to make that statement in case anyone was thinking otherwise.
Thank you.
So good afternoon, Chairman Flores and members of the board. My, the rest of my comments will be brief. Last time I was before your board was February 28th, and there were several items that I, I communicated to you that I would be working on with the CAO, with my staff in the Elections Division. And immediately following that presentation, my staff began preparing for a mock election. They've been working with vendors, working with each other, cross-training, looking through our documentation, looking through our forms, looking through our processes. And we reviewed everything again in our commitment to process improvement in the Elections Division. On Friday, June 9th, we had a training, a mock training. We revised our training, poll worker training, slides, and training process. So we ran through that this last Friday. And I want to thank, we, we received participation and feedback from County Council, County Administrative Office, the Assessors Office, and General Services. Today, we held our mock election up on the third floor. And I would like to thank, personally like to thank Ryan Alsop, Margot Reson, Kathy Kraus, Laura Avila, Jordan Kaufman, Devin Brown, Jeff Hill, and each of you for allowing your staff to come down and assist us in this endeavor. We had 229 participants from the County Administrative Office Building, so employees who volunteered their time to come down and help us, which is huge. And I'd especially like to, to thank my staff, who've been working very, very hard, who are committed to improving our processes, making our office as transparent as possible. And I'm just, I'm really very blessed. And so I just wanted to give you that update. We held our mock election and we still have to do the canvas period. So our canvas period is one day. So we won't be waiting 30 days for results. We'll have the one day. But we also have process improvements in that, in counting the ballots as well, that we're going to go ahead and try out tomorrow once we start running through some of the vote by mail ballots. So I'm really excited about that, hoping to save time in counting the ballots. And I just wanted to let you all know.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
My name is Risto Rubio, and it's R-I-S-T-O-R-U-B-I-O. I'm born and raised here in Bakersfield. I'm a veteran and I'm also a business owner here in Bakersfield. And I'm in the military, and not only in our military, but I think as, as parents, our parents, and we teach our kids accountability. And for some reason, we're not held accountable. Our streets out there are a mess. People are over there digging, they do underground whatever, and they just patch as whatever. You have an inch to a three quarters of an inch gap between the top of the road and that patch that they put on. All over Chester, I know none of us drive helicopters here. We go down these streets here and they're a mess. Nobody's held accountable for what they're being paid for. You go down Old Street, that thing's been there for almost a year already and the street's still the same. I live in Rosedale and I know that our streets over there get paved at least every six months. We all live in Bakersfield. I don't live only in Bakersfield. I don't only live in Rosedale. I live over here on the east side. My business is right here on, on Chester. And I think we need to be held accountable. If we're paying somebody to fix these roads or we're paying somebody to do potholes, this is ridiculous. This is ridiculous. We all drive in this town, all over this town. And somebody's doing work in this town and nobody's holding them accountable for the mess that they're doing on our streets, our worst streets. We live here. Our kids live here. And we need to be held accountable. If you mess up the street, fix it. If you're doing something underground, fix it the way you found it. Don't just leave it whatever and nobody cares. We do care. We live here. We need to start caring about our streets. Potholes everywhere on this street, on all the streets. And we need to be held accountable.
Thank you.
We need to do something about that.
Thank you, Mr. Rubio.
I'm going to be back with Bakersfield if this thing doesn't get straightened out.
Thank you. No, good, good point. I, I had an issue on college where, I don't want to name water companies, but there's a water company that did some work and it took all of us working together to get it back to the, to the standard that it was. So these things happened. So it's important that with specificity, you let us know when and where, and this way we can look into it appropriately. Okay, next, next speaker, please. That brings us to board member announcements or reports. Seeing none. It brings us to items 35, 36, and 37. This is items under the County Administrative Office, will be heard concurrently but voted upon separately. And at this time, I'm going to read those items. Under CAO, item 35 is a proposed selection and award agreement to Motorola Systems, Inc. for the installation and implementation of Regional Public Safety Communications Network. Item 36 is a proposed amendment to Number 10 Agreement with Federal Engineering for Project Management and Technical Support for that implementation of the network. And item 37 is a request to establish mid-year capital project and Regional Public Safety Communications Network project and request to release general fund designation, Public Safety Communication System, an amount of $95 million. So at this time, I will call upon our CEO, Ryan Alsop, to start staff's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This afternoon, my office is seeking your board's approval for the selection of an award of agreement to Motorola Solutions Incorporated for the installation and implementation of a Regional Public Safety Communications Network project and the proposed agreement containing non-standard terms and conditions. Today's recommended action has been years in the making and has been discussed multiple times with this board in public session, with various presentations over, over the course of those years. It's a process that has involved an extraordinary amount of our staff's time and effort and that of the city's staff as well. Today's recommended action follows an extraordinarily detailed, thorough, and thoughtfully executed years-long needs assessment, an RFQ and RFP process. As your board is aware, the RFP process for this project, along with other communication projects of similar size and scope in local government jurisdictions across this country, is highly and hotly competitive, given the large price tag, which is why in virtually every case, the losing competitor or competitors protest the award decision and in some cases pursue legal action. I want to thank our county's team that have been engaged in this critically important task, to include leadership from our sheriff and fire departments and our county council's office, who have been involved every step of the way. I'd also like to thank Federal Engineering, our principal consultant on this project, who are not only a nationally recognized leader in regional first responder communications projects of this size and scope, but have been with us and advising us through this process from inception through today and who will continue to remain an active member of our team through this project's full implementation. Thank you also to the city of Bakersfield and all of their staff, their police, and their fire departments, along with the city attorney's office, again, all of whom have been involved from day one. I was just wanting to, will everybody that's been involved from the county and city side, please stand up who are, who are in the room today? Just please stand up. Okay. Get a sense of the different individuals that are here. Thank you. I will tell you that all of us that have been involved in this project are in lockstep and unified in the recommendation before you today and believe it is in the best interest of this county to move forward. All of these people who are here today, as well as representatives from Motorola, who are also here, are available to address your board if needed. The county depends heavily upon its communication system for various law enforcement, fire suppression, and general operations. Every public safety organization in the county is affected by and has a stake in the system. In addition to public safety in other county departments, city, state, and federal agencies utilize two-way radio as a secure inter-jurisdictional mode of communication. The current communication system is nearly The current communication system is nearly 20 years old and has begun to deteriorate. It is now at the point where replacement parts are difficult, if not impossible, to obtain and most of the equipment has reached the end of support dates. This delay in replacing critical parts is eroding the overall effectiveness and public safety responsiveness here in Kern County. The City of Bakersfield Police Department, Fire Department and other city agencies operate an antiquated and unsupported analog city-owned VHF radio system. Currently, the city is procuring replacement parts from third-party internet auction sites to maintain its existing systems. The city and county recognize the immediate need to convert the respective public safety radio system to modern digital technology to ensure the safety of our first responders and the residents we serve and protect. Together, the city and county are experiencing increases in demand for services, specifically public safety services. Cooperative efforts to implement the Regional Public Safety Communications Network hold the potential for improvements in efficiency, redundancy and effectiveness. A regional system provides several operational benefits that will enhance emergency response, both during day-to-day operations and in the event of a large-scale emergency or disaster. Working jointly also results in cost savings in comparison to each agency procuring the new radio system separately, thus resulting in the best value to taxpayers. On September 20, 2016, your board approved a consulting agreement with Federal Engineering, Incorporated, to provide a full assessment of the county's communication system. The assessment addressed the current system and made recommendations to implement a cost-effective, a cost-effective, highly reliable digital public safety system that meets the current and emerging needs for the next 15 to 20 years. All key users of the communication system have thoroughly reviewed and concur with the key recommendations in the assessment report. On July 23, 2019, your board approved pursuing the next steps in replacing the Public Safety Communications Network, including the release of a two-step request for qualifications and request for proposal procurement process. Your board also directed the County Administrative Office to review financing options. I want to now ask Mr. Zerfus, our county's Chief Operations Officer, to walk you through the process, provide you some more detail on the project's scope and to discuss financing.
Thank you, Honorable Chairman and members of the board. As Mr. Alsop stated, this is a joint project between the City of Bakersfield and the County of Kern, providing for the critical replacement of our Regional Public Safety Communication System. A Communications Project Evaluation Committee was formed consisting of equal members from both county and city. The committee was diverse in its representation of both city and county representatives of each public safety agencies, law enforcement and fire services, as well as technical representation in, in land, mobile radio and information technology systems. On September 27, 2019, the county and the city issued a joint RFQ to qualify prospective proposers to participate in the RFP. There were three entities that qualified to participate in the RFP process and on February 21, 2021, the county and city issued a joint RFP to solicit proposals to be provided for the project. Although there were three entities participating in the RFP, only two of those entities ultimately submitted proposals. For the past several years, the committee spent many months reviewing and discussing the two RFPs. In addition, the committee received correspondences, checked each vendor's references and had multiple discussions with each vendor regarding their proposals and, and responses to committee's questions. Additionally, the committee spent several hours with Federal Engineering to ensure committee questions and understanding of the LMR sector landscape were based on sound judgment and reasoning regarding the industry's best practices and not unreasonable or unjust or unfair line of questioning. The committee then met to discuss individual assessments by each committee member for each respondent and formulated a combined evaluation. The criteria used for the evaluation included several factors. The proposed system design that contains the items, including such as compliance with the stated requirements and specifications of the RFP, completion and return of all mandatory forms, capacity, features, functionality of the system, warranty, maintenance and ongoing support and other factors deemed of value. Secondly, the proposed qualifications and experience of the team, the respondent's qualifications and the proposed team members, the financial stability, documentation showing that the organization, the proposer, has sufficient financial reserves to maintain the project for the duration of the project implementation and a compliance matrix complying with the requirements in the functional specifications set forth completing the, in the RFP. References were checked by the committee, vendor interviews were conducted by the committee and the proposers and then cost points were added for evaluation after the vendor's interview stage was completed. All of those factors were considered in, in rating the, the two responses to the RFP. The committee, with the assistance of Federal Engineering, has successfully completed the evaluation of the RFQ/RFP and the best and final offer phases of this project. After detailed and intense discussions and evaluation of all critical, of our criteria, the Joint City Council Committee is recommending the selection of Motorola as a successful vendor to provide the RPS CN, based on Motorola scoring higher than any other proposal in the RFP/RFQ process. Additional supporting information detailing the basis of the committee's recommendation can be found in the contract file. The project includes a state-of-the-art and modern P-25 radio system, that is a P-25 standard-based trunking system with geographically separated redundant elements, new ultra-high frequency or UHF, multi-cast and simulcast infrastructure, replacement of dispatch consoles and next-generation AXS consoles, expanding the system's capacity with P-25 Phase II technology, backwards compatibility with P-25 Phase I and analog, new IP-based microwave backhaul infrastructure, new network management system infrastructure, new antenna systems, spares and test equipment, optimized mobile coverage throughout Kern County, optimized portable radio coverage in RFP-provided service areas, voice and data applications for increased efficiency and interoperability, warranty, extended warranty and support options. Secondly, the site development of new towers, shelters, generators and solar power solutions at 16 greenfield site locations, greenfield sites referring to ground-up new locations where we don't have existing communications infrastructure and one existing site. It also includes the acquisition and development of five new sites to propose improved coverage. Those five sites are included in our unincorporated, more rural areas, subscribers' equipment, including handheld and vehicle mobile radios used by county agencies, dispatch and call logging systems, very high frequency or UHF, VHF conventional radio systems for a multitude of county facilities, contractors for the site development and three-year plus warranty, plus extended warranty, technical support, software support and upgrades, hardware support and upgrades for four to eight years. The project will replace a county-wide 23-year-old system with a joint county-city UHF/P-25 Phase II system. The county and the other agencies have already licensed UHF frequencies, which may be reused in a new system, thus reducing the number of new frequencies required for the new system. And in addition, a portion of the user's radios can be reused on the UHF system. A joint system will also greatly improve interoperability between county, city and other agencies, including those as CalFire, CHP and other police departments. This will become a common platform for our Regional Public Safety Communications. The total contract price for the county is $130,668,000 and $213,000. This is the total amount to be paid for Motorola for performing the scope of work detailed in the agreement and exhibits and includes, but is not limited to, all out-of-pocket costs for systems, equipment, deployment services, subscribers' equipment, implementation services, freight, insurance and taxes and additional push-to-talk features, interface with an existing mapping solution. The contract price also includes support for five additional years after the three-year warranty period at an estimated cost of $8,019,920. The contract price excludes the site remediation contingency of $46.5 million. However, this amount has been included in the fiscal impact and it is, it is anticipated that the county will need to complete site remediation to ensure the existing sites can accommodate new equipment, have adequate utility services or generators and other facility improvements are completed. Upon agreement by county and execution of the work order, Motorola will perform the site remediation services per work order. The county is not obligated to purchase site remediation services. It is estimated that this project timeline will expand over multiple years with an estimated completion date in 2031. The County Administrative Office has received several financing options available to the county to fund the acquisition and installation of this project. Included in your staff report on page five is a table showing the total cost of this project, including all the components previously explained, at a total cost of $177,168,213. Since 2019, the County Administrative Office and your board has been setting aside funds in a general fund designation to cover the cost of this system replacement. The general fund currently has $95.5 million in a designation for replacement of this project. In addition, the county could utilize approximately $9 million from its allocation of the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds authorized under the American Rescue Plan Act to fund a portion of the project. Development of the five new greenfield sites in unincorporated areas in the county, particularly Rosemont, Cuama, Lebec, Onyx and Polonia Pass, to provide coverage for these, to provide improved coverage in these areas, could be an allocation of Measure K funding. This would require use of approximately $28 million over the next five years to fund that portion of this project. The subscriber equipment and services primarily serve public safety departments. These departments receive an allocation of the one-half cent sales tax imposed under Proposition 172. The county currently has $10 million that could be allocated to cover a portion of that cost for the sheriff's office and the fire department's subscriber equipment. If needed, the county could seek direct lending for a portion of the subscriber equipment or use, or use a portion of the funds in the tobacco securitization account that currently has a balance of $33 million. In order to preserve the right for tax-exempt issued financing, the County Administrative Office may return to your board to request a financing resolution. But at this time, we have plans to fully fund this project without incurring any additional debt on behalf of the county. A table on page six of your staff report breaks down the different cash flow allocations over the next five years. In total, you can see that the general fund designation, the American Rescue Plan Act allocation, the Measure K allocation and the Prop 172 allocation total $142 million, leaving a balance of $34 million to be financed with other county resources. That could be, again, the tobacco securitization funds, which we have $33 million of, could be future carryforwards or other capital allocations that we set aside in future years. But the existing resources fully fund the first three years of, of costs of this project. The criticality of this communication system compels the county to move forward with the replacement of this, of this system. The combined efforts of the county and city of Bakersfield demonstrate the recognized importance of addressing the aging infrastructure that is so vital to the emergency responders who protect our community. A combined redundant system between the county and city will ultimately result in a savings to taxpayers by not having duplicate efforts between the two agencies. The recommendation before your board today is that your board approve the selection and the award of the agreement to Motorola Solutions, Inc. for the installation and, and implementation of the Regional Public Safety Communications Network. Find that the proposed activity is not a project subject to environmental review pursuant to State SEQA Guidelines Section 15061B3 or alternatively, it is exempt from further environmental review pursuant to Sections 15301, 15302 and 15303 of the State SEQA Guidelines. Approve the proposed agreement containing non-standard terms and conditions in an amount not to exceed $177,168,213 effective June 13, 2023 and authorize your chairman to sign. As Mr. Alsop explained earlier, there are a number of representatives here from all represented agencies that have been a part of this. In addition to that, we have Federal Engineering here, our, our consultant that's been assisting the county in this process and we're happy to answer any questions that your board may have.
Thank you, Mr. Zerfus. Thank you, Mr. Alsop. Before we go to the public, any questions or comments from the board? Okay, seeing none, at this time, we'll take public comment. Anyone wishing to comment on this item or items, now's the time. Actually, I need to make a point for clarification for our board, one second.
Okay.
This is a question for staff. Did your staff presentation, was that an overview for all three items or just the first item?
That was an overview for all three items.
For all three.
Thank you.
Okay, please proceed.
Thank you. That's right, it's always ready. Good afternoon Chairman Flores, members of the board. My name is Aaron Williams. I'm the Vice President of Global Sales for L3 Harris Technologies, Public Safety and Professional Communications. So, everything Mr. Alsop said is correct. They're all, all these radio bids are highly contentious, they're very competitive. I've shared with you all my concerns in the process. You know, as I always tell people, if you just get me in the ring and tell me the rules, I get a chance to fight, right? And so, there were challenges or inconsistencies in the process that I've shared with you all, that I would just ask that you look into, question. You're going to hear from a lot of people, I had the challenge of two minutes convincing you that you shouldn't vote today and hold off on $177 million award, which is not easy to do. But I, I ask, as we received all our FOIA open records requests just on Thursday evening, late, early Friday morning, take the time, spend the next 30 days to ensure that $177 million investment is the right thing for the county. Ensure the process was followed, ensure that everything was done correctly and then make the decision. At the end of the day, if I lose, that's fine. I know there's a winner and a loser, I don't mind. But just look into the process because we found inconsistencies from what we were told of how the process would go at pre-bid between us and the other vendors to how it all ended in the end. We struggled to get information, we struggled to get open records requests up until the last minute. We noticed that there were conversations happening outside of our single point of contact. We followed the rules to a T, we stayed within the rules, we played by the rules to ensure that we stayed consistent with the process, as we think that we always should be. L3 Harris, as you know, we are a large UDS defense contractor, providing our nation and the world with our cutting-edge technology for warfighters everywhere, as well as first responders. We currently serve in this area at Edwards Air Force Base and Naval Air Weapons Station China Lake. And so much of our technology we build today goes also into the radios that public safety uses as well. You will notice, I think, one of our inconsistencies you'll see is requirements changed by the time they got to the contract phase, so the price was reduced because there's less sites than what we proposed. Again, that changes everything. So, there's inconsistencies along across the process as you get to the final contract today that should be looked into, unbiased and just look at it from another angle to ensure everything was followed and you had the best project, product for the end result. Due to these concerns, I just ask that you take the next 30 days, evaluate everything and then make your decision. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Michael Turnipseed, representing the Kern County Taxpayers Association. Today, your board is making the single, the second-largest financial decision in the history of the county, only after the debacle of our pension obligation bonds from the late 1990s. Because of poor analysis and decision-making, the county has been forced, you have been forced to spend twenty, not, scores of millions of dollars in extra interest because of a poorly-planned project. For eight years, your staff has been trying to build a new radio system for public safety. In doing so, the original system requirements were changed, pushing the process down a different path. Today, your board is asked to approve a contract based on best value over lowest cost. Well, that sounds like the pension obligation bonds of 1990s to me. Your board is responsible for the outcomes of your decision, not your staff. You are responsible for what happened 30 years ago. It's not your job, but you inherited it. The board must decide that best value is really a better investment than lowest cost. Since everyone has biases, to say that there's no bias in the process doesn't work. Everybody has bias on everything. We looked at long-term costs, and I know there's a supplemental medium-term four-to-eight-years maintenance contract. What happens after eight years? Are you going to come back with an out-of-service agreement to take care of the life of the, it's technical stuff. That does not mention anything past the eight years. And what's your plan for long-term maintenance? How many millions and millions of dollars is that going to take that we don't even know about today? Without currently negotiated service contract, your board is basically assuming a blank liability for the next 20 or 30 years, just like you inherited from the, your board in the late 1990s that really did an incredibly, incredibly bad bond. And they got professional advice from one of the top bond firms in the country. So, you sometimes get what you don't pay for.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Turnipseed. Your clocks running out, do you want to wrap up?
Oh, one more paragraph. It's critical that your board consider all the factors that are on the table to make a decision that aligns with the county's long-term needs, long-term costs, and responsibility to taxpayers' dollars that they're spent wisely and effectively. A bad decision today could cost the county dozens of millions of dollars in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time and the extension.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Turnipseed. Next speaker, please. Okay, I think that concludes public comment on this item. I'll bring it back to the board for any questions or comments for staff.
I will.
Okay, Supervisor Perez.
Thank you. You heard presentations from two gentlemen here, raising good points. Do you want to respond to that, or what's your best response to any of that if you think that it's warranted? I'll leave that decision to you, really, but I would love to hear from somebody in response, in particular to Mr. Turnipseed. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor, or Chairman Flores, Supervisor Perez, thank you. Yeah, I mean, I would agree with Mr. Turnipseed. This is, in fact, it's in the board letter. This is one of our biggest expenditures in our history. It's quite amazing that outside of one of the competitors, we've had just one person come down and provide comment on it. I would say that this is not, this is not a pension obligation bond. This is a replacement of a first responder public safety system that protects these gentlemen, like the one standing behind me, and our firefighters and others who are out in the field. We have situations where the current system is dead in many places. They can't get backup, it doesn't work, we can't support it. So, this is a situation, and I think Mr. Turnipseed's correct. I mean, there's always, you know, there's a fair amount of risk in anything, any decision that you make. It's just sort of inherent with the job that you all have. You rely on the very best advice of the people that you employ here at the county. We have a lot of good people that have been involved with this project from day one. And we, we think this is the best value and best direction for the county. We have a system we have, we absolutely have to replace, should have been done, frankly, years ago. We got waylaid with the county's financial crisis, which was roaring when I started here. We got waylaid with COVID. At least a couple of years, it slowed things down, but here we are. And I want, maybe Supervisor Perez, if you don't mind, I'd like to ask Representative for Federal Engineering to come up and maybe provide some comments. This is a group that has been with us as our principal advisor from the inception of this, over the years, been involved with the process. They are involved all over the country in these projects and are very familiar with, you know, the Motorola's and L3 Harris's of the world. And sir, if you'd like to maybe provide some comments.
Sure, thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman and members of the board. Just to kind of-
Can you provide us with your name?
Yes, thank you. Rajit Javer, Director with Federal Engineering. So, our role to support the county, we were engaged, unfortunately, we ourselves won through a competitive procurement back in 2016, as was mentioned. So, we've been supporting and consulting on radio communications for the county for the past seven years. We supported the RFQ process, the RFP process. Want to make sure it's very clear that the requirements that were incumbent within the RFP are all from stakeholders, from public safety agencies within the county and the city, making sure that the coverage needs were met, the capacity needs, all these key criteria that are part of a public safety radio communications system, which is very complex. There's, you know, dozens of sites, a lot of infrastructure that has to be built to support it. It takes a lot of time. So, as was mentioned, with the current system, even the new system won't be up on the air for many years, even if you started tomorrow. You know, it takes time to get through that process. The other thing I think was mentioned I wanted to address was changes to the RFP. When the RFP was released, as is normal with any RFP of this size and magnitude, there were questions from the vendors. They were addressed. Some of those questions led to changes in the RFP language, which were issued as addendums. All the vendors were aware of those addendums and then were able to submit their RFP proposal. We then supported the county by evaluating the RFPs that were, RFP proposals that were submitted. We ourselves at Federal Engineering and my team do not score those proposals. That's for the selection committee. What we did do is to evaluate the compliance to the RFP requirements that were put together in terms of pros and cons, and provided that input to the selection committee, evaluation committee, so that they could score based on, you know, the best knowledge they had at the time. Overall, yeah, we've supported the process, felt that the process, from our perspective, has gone smoothly. It's taken a lot longer, as was mentioned, than anyone expected, but there's obviously external circumstances pertaining to that. But I guess that's my summary on where we're at. I'd love to entertain any questions you have for me.
That's very helpful. My colleagues may have a question of you. Ryan?
I just wanted to add in one. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that very much. Thank you for the input.
You may want to stay close.
I did want to, I just wanted to add one thing, and I'm going to pass it over to Mr. Zervis, who has something else to add, but, and we're just sort of being organic here, but I want to, you know, your board has been preparing for this moment for years. We have been talking about this moment for years. You have been saving money smartly as a board, putting money away for years. I think it's extraordinary for a $177 million project that we are not incurring any debt. That's an extraordinary thing, and it is a credit to this board and your planning, your long-term vision, and, you know, going from where we were in 2017 to a time where we're able to get something done that's as meaningful as this is for our first responders, and not just our first responders, but our community, I think is, it's just an extraordinary thing. And, and I think the Kern Taxpayers Association should put some value in that as well. Mr. Zervis.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you. I wanted to follow up on Mike Turnipseed's comment about best value versus low bid, because we all think low bid is the best way to go. You know, it's the managing the resources of the taxpayer well. But we're not looking for the cheapest solution, we're looking for the best solution. We're not looking to be locked in to a project description that was developed years earlier with limited information when you go through the process of meeting with experts in the industry and people actually proposing solutions that really speak to what is the best solution for our communication needs for our first responders. So, so, cost is always a component, and it's a component in the evaluation criteria, but it's not the only component. We need to make sure that it's, it's really the, the best solution that's going to last for this county for the next 20 or 30 years. And that, that's why this is set up, and frankly, that's why most projects of this scope, of this, of this technical complexity are done on a best value basis and not, not just the low bid basis. So, I hope that adds some context to this discussion on best value versus low bid. We want to be good stewards of taxpayer resources and invest those things wisely, and part of that is making sure we get the best product for the value, and that really is what best value is all about. There were-
Jim?
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead, I'll wait till you're done.
No, it's okay.
It's clear to me the time and length and extent of resources that have been expended. I personally do not see a rational, reasonable basis to continue this matter. That just seems to be putting off the inevitable. And it seems to me that we're appropriate to move forward today, so if you don't have any further remarks, I don't know what my colleagues are going to do, but I'll make a motion on staff's recommendation. And I just want to say thank you for your clarity.
Thank you, Supervisor Perez, Supervisor Peters.
Thank you, Chairman. So, I just, I'm going to start by saying I know absolutely nothing about how this technology works, the ins and outs of it at all. Luckily, we have a lot of people that are smarter than me, like from our sheriff's department, fire department, IT, that know what they're talking about, know what, know what they need, know what's going to be the best thing for them. I get that, I get the fact that we've saved for this, we're not going to incur debt. I think that's outstanding. From my perspective, on the side of the dice, you know, we have to put a lot of trust in what we're told. There's so many, sort of wide variety of issues. We get to be about an inch deep, but a mile wide on all these things. And I guess my main question is, considering we've been going through this process for so long, you know, I get that we're ready to move forward on it, but to answer what was asked earlier, can we wait 30 days? Can we get more information on this? Can we dig down deeper on this? Can, you know, we just drill into it a little bit more? Is that going to jeopardize this project if we wait, get a little bit more educated personally on this, and then look at this again?
Supervisor Peters through the chair. You know, this, this project's been a long time coming, and there's, as you, as you referenced, there's been a lot of hours put in by both city and county staff to get to this point, our attorneys, the Motorola team, and we really are at a point where, where we need to, to move forward. The city council is taking this item up tomorrow at their city council meeting to consider the same action. They can't move forward without us moving forward. We're kind of in lockstep on this. And we've kind of pushed it off to the, to this point where we do need to make a decision to move forward. Of course, your, your board has the purview to, to decide to not make an award today. That's not what staff would recommend, and I speak for myself and the rest of the evaluation team comprised of city and county partners. So, I hope that answers your question.
I think so, and just, just so you guys know where I'm coming from, it's not that I doubt a single word in, in any of this. It's just that, even though this has been going on for years, I haven't been on the board for years, I haven't dealt with this personally for years, I feel like I haven't really had a chance to become as acquainted as I should with this, considering the large amount of money we're talking about spending. And me having to be a steward for taxpayer dollars, I don't feel like I have that knowledge base yet to go out and explain this, the route we went, this was the, the issues with the, that were brought up with, with the process. I just am not there yet. So, I'd like to hear from my other colleagues as well, but that's my comments for right now.
Thank you, Supervisor Peters. I have some questions myself. This is new to me as well, this is my first time with this. I have some questions for staff, and staff, you can determine who's, who's best fit to answer this. To that point, yeah, this is a huge, huge public transaction, $177 million, the, the largest, I don't know about the pension, but it's definitely the largest for me. And so, I want some assurances before moving forward, and the timeline is the timeline. There's been a lot of talk of best value. I don't know, what, what's, can you quantify what the actual difference is, just in terms of price? Because I'm reading different things at the last minute, and I don't know, I don't know what's what. Is it 15 million difference? Is it 30 million difference? Is it a $40 million? What is the actual difference in just, in raw price?
So, I'm going to ask our gentleman from Federal Engineering to come up and speak to. It's my understanding that, that some of the aspects from the L3 Harris proposal were incomplete, so I don't know that we can even answer that question, but I'm going to ask Federal Engineering to respond.
Yeah, I don't know the exact answer, because also, keep in mind, when the proposals were done, it's a breakdown between the city costs and the county costs. What's brought in front of the board today is the county portion, and those were calculated in different ways amongst the different vendors. In fact, when we were in the negotiation period, I think one of the other questions or concerns that was raised is there was a difference between the final proposal and the, what's right in front of you for a contract, and that's normal. We have negotiations with selected vendor, and there's going to be some adjustments that, that benefit the county, because trying to leverage infrastructure that you have, make some changes, and, and just identify that. Doesn't mean all the aspects of the RFP, everything else is still, still very much valid. But as far as the, the cost differential, there was a slight differential in a project-wide. I think it was around 10, 12 million, but what that breakdown is for the county, it's a, it's a fraction of that. I don't know what that exact fraction is.
Okay, thank you. So, it's about 12 million?
For the full project, including the city costs.
Well, thank you, that's, that's very helpful. Thank you. Okay, and then, so, I understand the value proposition as well. So, what are we getting a value, from a value perspective, for that 12 extra million?
So, it's, so unlike things where you're buying routers or just pure equipment, so this essentially takes other things into account. So, there's the capacities of the system, the coverage of the system, there, there's many different facets that all drive the cost factor. I know one of the things that was stated is just number of pieces of hardware. Well, it's not really judged like that in, in this realm. It's, there's a lot of different factors that go in, but overall, best value to me means the best overall design and, and that would meet all the needs that are special. And, I mean, keep in mind, it's about an 80, 90-page document of just specification. So, I know we boil it down to, you know, typically cost and coverage, but there's a lot of other aspects of the radio system that were included, everything from redundancy to interoperability to battery life, should a site go down, and power to that site go down, how does that site stay up on the air? All these aspects are basically articulated in those, in the RFP requirements. So, all of that, I think, was mentioned earlier, there's a compliance matrix. So, there's different differences between what the different vendors proposed in terms of what they comply to and what they don't, and the level of compliance. So, those are all aspects that then feed into the best value for, for the system.
Thank you. So, I appreciate your treatment on that, that's very helpful. And I also have a high degree of confidence in the composition of, of the committee, in the scoring committee. I respect their professional backgrounds, they're the subject matter expert, I'm not, but I have a different lens here. Mine is the taxpayer. You're asking my board to approve a very expensive contract, so just bear with us. Also, one more thing I noticed also, I haven't had a lot of time, and that's, that's my concern as well. Does, it's no reflection of the process of seven years, but if you had seven years to do this, I would have appreciated a briefing in advance of big things coming in. I would have appreciated a briefing in advance of big things coming in the horizon. So, I'm still reading. It was a large report. I did the executive summary of five pages. There's another 6,000 that I'm not going to go into, but I'm getting a lot of last-minute incoming, and I have not had the time to digest that. So I'm going really quickly at the last minute, and something this big, I don't like to go quickly and at the last minute. Again, it's not going to necessarily jeopardize the whole process, because I know we need to acquire a new system. Public safety is predicated on communication, and we need to get there, and I understand that. There's something that came in today that talked about, this is back to not overall pricing, but this is one category of pricing, that in the actual bid pricing for cost, the low-cost bidder scored lower than the high-cost bidder. How is that a possibility?
So, I was not involved...
And I'm not saying it's accurate. That's just, that's an assertion.
Sure. Yeah, I was not involved.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I'd like to, with your indulgence, I'd like to ask County Council Brian Van Wyk to come up, who I would encourage to provide a point-by-point rebuttal to everything that was provided to you by L-3 Harris.
Thank you.
Good afternoon Chairman Flores, members of the board. This is, the pricing is somewhat complicated here precisely because it's best value. But I think one way we can look at it is that there are several components of the pricing, and those could be viewed differently. If you look to the evaluation committee's comments, I think there was some confusion about L-3 Harris pricing, because their general impression is that L-3 Harris' pricing was incomplete. Didn't price required elements of jobs such as Tone Mountain Village. The general impression seemed to be that they didn't have as good of understanding as Motorola as what was asked for. And that's why there are some differences in the pricing. Another note out of those, of the summary from the evaluation committee, is that the cost changes from L-3 Harris, they didn't correlate to a tangible metric in the way that Motorola's did. That was an area where Motorola received more points than L-3 Harris did. Generally, looking at the pricing elements of this, it seems that the evaluation committee's perception was that L-3 Harris didn't really understand what the county was wanting here.
Okay. Okay. So, just to recap, it's, even though there's a low price, it was an inaccurate low price?
There were different, there were parts that were not priced into their response.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
And it gave the impression of being incomplete.
Thank you. And then, I had another question. There's also, in this document, there's also an assertion of a violation of a no-contract provision. Can you elaborate on that? I don't know if you've seen what I'm referencing. I think I should reference what I'm reading. It's a L-3 Harris dated June 12th that was hand-walked into my office, I don't know, this afternoon after closed session. Okay, that one, that one.
Chairman Flores, yes, I am familiar with this document. There's a letter from L-3 Harris as of today's date, or excuse me, as of yesterday's date, I believe. And it indicates that L-3 Harris believes there to be a no-contact policy contained in the RFP. This is another example where they don't really understand the requirements. The RFP expressly contemplates that at the conclusion of the process, the county will conduct individual negotiations with proposers to prepare a final contract for award.
So was the process concluded for that?
So after the evaluation committee made a recommendation, county staff worked to negotiate the contract to present to your board for award.
Okay. So you're saying there's no violation of the no-contract provision?
There is no no-contact policy. I don't know where that came from.
I'm just reading some of the things I'm reading. I'm not saying there is or isn't. I'm just asking questions. But the questions point to the need for me to have more time, because this is a big contract, and I have a lot more questions. Some I want to ask of staff, some I don't even have. Those questions are not even developed yet, because I have a lot of reading to do. So, that's just a snapshot of some of my concerns. And thank you for your answers. They're equally well-thought-out, and you're already giving me some of the assurances that I'm looking for. Thank you. Supervisor Couch.
Mr. Van Wyk, while you're there, let me try to give you some context from what I know, and I could be completely wrong about this. It's my understanding that L-3 Harris believes there was contact during the RFP process. And I think they believe that, because they know there was contact. But in your mind, the RFP process was over, the county staff, maybe the city staff as well, had made a decision. They didn't know that. I think that's the case. They were not notified that there had been any decision made, and then they see that people are in contact with Motorola. So how are they notified of that decision? How are the RFP applicants or respondents, whatever we call them, how are they notified of that decision? When are they notified?
So there was no formal action that had been taken. There was a recommendation from the evaluation committee to recommend this contract for award, and for county staff to finish negotiations with Motorola, so that we could present that recommendation and contract to your board.
So that could have been, you could have done all of that, and if L-3 Harris would have never been notified of anything? That's the way, I mean, that literally could happen?
That's correct. You know, we had hoped to have that hopefully a bit sooner, closer to the conclusion of that process and their recommendation, but here's what we are...
Say that again, I want to make sure I understand.
We had hoped that the time between the recommendation and today would be a bit closer, but this is how long it has taken.
The recommendation from the committee?
From the committee.
Until today, you would hope would be a shorter time period?
That's right.
During that time period would be when the negotiations would take place, and that's when the contact would have taken place.
That's right. After, when L-3 Harris began to allege the no-contact policy, it was a while after the evaluation committee had made their recommendation for award.
But it's kind of understandable why they would have thought, there's contact here that shouldn't be happening, because they hadn't heard, had they heard anything at that point? From us, from the county? We've made a decision, we're recommending Motorola. Thanks for your participation. I mean, anything? What did they hear from us?
So, you know, we responded to them and told them that per section 1. D of the RFP, we would be conducting negotiations with the prospective proposal.
We responded to them after they said, hey, there's been contact, that we weren't, thought there wasn't supposed to be any contact. That's when we responded to them, right?
That's right.
We didn't respond to them, we were not responsive or notify them, I guess I should say, that there had been a decision by the committee. There was, has that ever been done?
That may have been done at a staff level. That's not a process that I would have been involved in. What my advice to the department was, is that we have a recommendation from the evaluation committee, and that now we need to prepare the contract to present to your board for award.
But that, that's what I'm saying wasn't done. Am I right about that?
I would have to ask the department. I don't know if they made that contact or not.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Scrivener.
Can I have one more?
Yeah. Supervisor, sorry. I thought you were done.
You might ask my question. Go ahead.
I started to read this, and as Supervisor, or Chairman Flores says, it's close to 6,000 pages, and I got to page 60. On page 60 is when it starts to be redacted. Now, why, I just have, why are the, why is this thing so heavily redacted? What is in there that's so important that can't be, that the public can't know?
I can speak to this issue. There's a lot of technical details. When you look through this document, I know that it's massive, it's 6,000 pages, there's a lot of, lot of pages of very technical radio information that can be categorized as critical infrastructure information, and for reasons pertaining to the security of the county's communication system, we didn't believe it was appropriate to broadcast that information to the world and publish it on the website.
So it's a different answer than I thought I was going to get. I thought I was going to be told it was proprietary information.
There is, some of it was redacted on the basis of being proprietary. There was also information redacted on the basis of being critical infrastructure information.
Well, there's a lot of that in here. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Couch. Supervisor Scrivener.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Did Mr. Turnipseed get an answer to his question regarding the 8 million additional dollars for the five-year, for the five-year extension of the three-year warranty? And what, I think the question essentially was, what happens after the five years? So you get a three-year warranty, then we're paying for an additional five years of support. What happens at the conclusion of that? I imagine we can negotiate maybe perhaps for more, for more years of coverage, or we take it from there. I don't know. What's the answer?
So I'm going to ask our friends from Federal Engineering here to speak to kind of what typically happens at the end of that. We did negotiate for that extended warranty period to address that very concern, the uncertainty of that ongoing maintenance cost. But to Mr. Turnipseed's point, you know, this is a 20, 30-year asset, so there is a gap after that. So what's typical in those cases?
Yeah. So I've seen everything from a, you know, 10-year maintenance and upgrade type to five, to seven years. So, in this case, after the three-year warranty and the five years, yeah, during that period, the potential's there to continue to essentially procure further out those services, another five-year period or six-year period. What it does do, it brings the platform of the infrastructure up to a certain level at that point, and then obviously you could continue to support the system. The lifecycle of the system, as was mentioned, is a lot longer than, it's not like eight years, and you know, the system would no longer be supported. Also, there's no, we'd made clear in the RFP, and even had the vendors comply to, that there's no end-of-life products as part of the system, so that the county is not procuring something that, you know, could be end-of-life two years from now or three years from now. So that was another safety check that we wanted to make sure was part of that. Okay. Thank you. And as far as that, as far as that extension's concerned, and the negotiating of further extensions of support, warranty, is that something that the county would be negotiating solely, or does that also include the city, where they have a portion of that cost? Or do they have, or do they have their own agreement for support for any portion of it? My understanding is they have their own portion. That's what, I guess going to the city council tomorrow for that similar period of time. But yes, the thought would be, since it's a joint system, that at that point, some few years out, there would be a discussion between the city and county to figure out the duration of extension, and then negotiate that jointly with the vendor. Okay. And that's a good segue for my final question regarding the city and their decision that is coming up tomorrow. At least two supervisors have expressed their interest in having more time on this, and I'm open to that. You know, some of us have been here longer than others. What impact, however, if we did delay? Say we delay, continue these three items, 35, 36, 37? Say we continue them two weeks? We have a board meeting in one week on the 20th, we have another one following on the 27th, so that would be two weeks if we did. What impact would that have on what happens with the city tomorrow? In other words, I think staff said, well, you know, if we don't move forward, then the city can't move forward. Does that mean that their decision, obviously, this is a county-wide system, and the city has a piece, so I get that we both have to agree. But as far as timing is concerned, they could make their decision tomorrow night, I assume, and then it could come back to us, but I don't know that. What are the triggers as far as their ability to discuss and decide, depending on what we do here today?
Supervisor Scrivener through the chair. My understanding is that Motorola won't enter into an agreement with just the city, so they can't move forward without the county moving forward.
Okay. So could the city decide on, make a decision? I get that Motorola won't move forward, but can the, could the city, presumably, if we continue this for two weeks, could they decide to move forward tomorrow, and then we subsequently come back, make a decision? If we do decide in the affirmative on the 27th, then does it have to go back to them? I'm just wondering about the mechanics of this.
So it's, we did have this set up for the county to go first, obviously, because it was a smoother, smoother way to move forward. I don't know. I can't speak for the city. We do have some folks from the city here, maybe they can speak to that. For example, you know, typically, we can't bring your board a contract that's not already signed by the other party. So that would preclude us from moving that forward. So I don't know what the requirements at the city are for how they execute agreements and get board approval for agreements.
Yeah. And I'm not hinging my decision on whether or not to continue on that necessarily, but I would like to know if anybody could, if anyone can tell us.
Chairman, Board of Supervisors Gregory Pradovos, Director of Technology Services for the City of Bakersfield.
Good afternoon, welcome.
Thank you. My understanding is, should this board not move forward with this item today, we plan to proceed with our presentation to our council tomorrow, and then I will probably issue a blue memo to our council to delay voting on the item until this body has agreed to the agreement and move forward in an affirmative way. So that will probably be our next council meeting in two weeks.
Thank you.
So on the 28th, then?
Correct.
Okay. Very good. All right. Thank you. So I know we have a motion that's on the table right now to approve, but I've heard from at least two colleagues who would like additional time. That, I assume that's still the case, but we'll see. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you Supervisor. Supervisor Perez.
Thank you, Jeff. I am more than confused right now, because we have a scenario where the entire county apparatus, including its experts that have for years worked with our sheriff's department, and all the people who have an interest in Kern County, meeting this end and moving forward. And yet, here we are, a board session, and we have the politicians advocating for completely unclear in my mind what's going to happen in two weeks when we return. Are you going to read 6,000 pages in two weeks and delve into the mechanics and the specifics of the world of Motorola? I seriously doubt that. I have not heard one real reason here today to come back in two weeks or four weeks that is going to make any of the politicians on this stage any more knowledgeable, or any more capable of making any decision about what is so complex, it takes people devoting their entire careers to understanding it. I think this is really embarrassing. I think it's obvious what's going on, and I guess I'll be withdrawing my motion. I don't know if I'll get a second. But this is, this is really not the best of us. I want to thank county council, my county administrative office, all of your experts who stood up, all of the first responders, that are all saying, this is what we're supposed to be doing. I think this is really, really embarrassing. I don't know what my colleagues are going to do, but it's obvious that there's something else at play here, and not doing what the county experts, we pay full salaries to do, to advise us to do. Anyway, that's, those are all my thoughts. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you Supervisor Perez. CEO, CEO one. Yeah. Whoever that is.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just had, I'm going to go back a couple, and then I'm going to hand it to Jim, because he has something important that you need to take under consideration. But I'm looking at the committee that was at this for a long time, and not one of them scored the competitor who came forward higher than Motorola. Motorola was ranked high across the entire unanimously, every single member of that committee. So I just wanted to lay that out there, and then Mr. Zerfus.
As far as, following up on your question Supervisor Scrivener through the chair, on costs, or really, what happens if we don't move forward today? The pricing in the Motorola agreement is locked or valid through June 20th. So we'll likely have to, I mean, we'd be subject to having to renegotiate that contract price.
So that's if, may I, Chair, just, since that's in, he's responding to me. Okay. So that's a two-week continuance, obviously doesn't meet that threshold. And just, you know, for clarity, I'm prepared to move forward today, but I'm, you know, I'm just responding to comments that I heard from my colleagues up here, and in the interest of moving forward with unanimity. But, so if we continued it one week to the 20th, if there was approval, I know that cuts it, so that cuts it short, just wondering if that, if that pricing would still be locked in? in, because that's, one week is the 20th?
That's, that's correct, and we'd have to talk with Motorola and, I, I didn't negotiate that deadline, but that is the, the deadline that was agreed to. So I don't know if that's end of day, or I'm assuming it is, but we'd need to confirm that.
Well, close the business, that's usually how it goes.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Jeff.
Go ahead, come on.
Won't the city have to approve it too? And that would then be beyond the deadline?
I don't, I don't know what a week does to the pricing, but, um, we, we've done this for seven years, and I, I don't think that two weeks is going to implode it. I think two weeks would give me personally the, the assurance as to move forward. I don't think we, was the motion withdrawn, or was the motions, the motion still stands? Okay. Okay. Yeah, sure. And I kind of reject this notion of, you know, the more we talk about it, the more I feel like it's being crammed, and I reject that. I reject it on the time constraint basis. We can move forward with a good public safety contract in two weeks, in three weeks, or two months. To say that it's going to be in jeopardy, to say that it's going to go down, to say that we're scheming the system, I don't, I don't buy that narrative. I think the narrative that works for me is the interest of the Kern County taxpayer, and if more time is necessity, and if, and if the majority of this board is asking for that, it's a very small ask for $177 million.
Yeah, it's entirely up to your board. And we will support whatever your board would like to do. Elsa, do you want to, uh, if you don't mind, could I ask Elsa, she's got some information that she wanted to share as well?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I've been in front of you multiple times through the budget process, and I have been, you know, trying to figure out a way to fund this project that we've known for seven years. Actually, I've known for 20 years. My first day on the job was the, the payment of the communication project that we're replacing. Have we been setting aside funds through 20 years? Absolutely. You wouldn't have the sticker price shock that you have right now. But we are here, and I can assure you, I read that agreement. I negotiated the payment terms with Motorola because I wanted to make sure that the county was protected, that the taxpayer money is, that they're going to get the best value, at least from a financial perspective, and Motorola was very agreeable. I, I delayed this agreement multiple times, coming to your board until I felt comfortable that at least the payment terms, I can assure you, you're going to read 6,000 pages, and I consider myself an intelligent human being. I do not understand the technology, I understand the price, I understand the permanent, uh, payment terms, and I want to assure you that we put a lot of thought into spending $177 million of taxpayers' money, when I just heard from one of my constituents, that I live on the east side, that they don't have sidewalks. But I want to make sure that when they call 911, there's a fire and a sheriff deputy that is going to respond, and we have a system that has been here as long as I've been here, and it needs to happen. There is a price in the agreement, because I delayed, to be honest with you, to make sure that we had the best payment terms for the county, to make sure that we didn't have to borrow money, that we didn't add another burden, as Mr. Turnipseed said. I wasn't here for the record for the POBs, but I have lived through the POBs, and I know what that has done to our county. We have been delaying things because we have to pay them, they're mandated. This is a system that we're getting into that will protect our firefighters, that I felt, that I negotiated. Good terms for the county for payment, that are we going to get a value of 177 million? And I can assure you, the moment your board approves that agreement, whether it's today or in two weeks, which I'm going to have to start over with the pricing, because price goes up. They quoted a price, keep in mind how long ago they quoted that price. We held them to that price. Inflation has been going up, and Motorola continued to agree with us to hold our price. I've been holding them for weeks to make sure we have good payment terms, and it's not to delay your board's decision, it's not to put the taxpayers a risk, it's for the value of our taxpayers. So I want to make sure you're informed of that. We do have a risk of, if we don't get it done, redoing it, and just a subscriber, the radios that our firefighters, then our sheriff deputies carry on their belts, if we don't do this, that, the price of that equipment is over $24 million. If it changes, then we're paying more than, we're going to be paying more than $177 million. I can assure you of that. I just want to make sure that your board considers that.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Elsa, Ms. Martinez, thank you very much for that, and your, you know, your, your work on this is, um, is, is very much appreciated, and I have a tremendous amount of faith in, in your, um, in your thoughtful approach and your advice. So are you, I want to make sure I'm, I'm clear on what you're saying. You're concerned that if we delay this two weeks, that this price can go up?
Correct.
And you believe that the likelihood of that is?
It's, it's based on the communication, I went back and forth with Motorola for multiple weeks, it is likely. I held them to the fire. I, I was ready to pull through negotiation, because, I mean, rightfully so for them, we've been negotiating for a long time, and in addition to that, we have, this RFP process has gone for way too long. If you look at the staff report, I was typing there going, this took too long. I mean, if you read that seven page, that's in there, that's for me. It took too long, and, and to Motorola or whoever, whatever vendor, that's too long for them to quote a price with inflation the way it is, and then we're, we're here again, delaying it again. Of course it's going to go up, because we negotiated at least in the agreement that in front of you, that if that agreement gets approved, our price is firm. We have that assurance. If we delay it, I cannot tell you that we're going to have that assurance.
I, I appreciate your due diligence, and, because I have enormous, uh, faith in you, in your, uh, caliber, with, with numbers and your experience, but I do take issue with delaying again. I'm not delaying anything again. This, this is my first, this is the first time that this has come before my board. Man, I, I've only been here for six months, but even in my prior, my prior tenure with my prior supervisor, it didn't come before our board. A protest came before our board. So I don't know if I agree with this delaying again. This is the first time that it's here. Someone correct me if I'm wrong, if this is the second time. And I understand inflation, and I'm not trying to, this is the, the public taxpayers' dollars. I don't, I don't want to see the price go up, and I, I would hope that the prospective vendor work with the county, uh, to, to give, give us the best value, because we've been talking about value, I, I hope that they make good on that. And I want to, I don't, I don't mean that snarkily, I mean that sincerely. Work with us, and I don't even know how the vote's going to go. Maybe we, we adopt it now, or we don't, but, um, those are, those are just my, my final thoughts. Supervisor, Supervisor Peters.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, I just wanted to echo, uh, some of the things that you just said about not having a chance to look at this, uh, to the extent that I would like to have, to not get that information. Supervisor Crouch mentioned that earlier on a previous item. I had nobody sit down and brief me on this. I read through what was in our backup material, tried to understand the ins and outs of it, and that's unacceptable to me, moving forward. So I would ask our department heads, this doesn't happen again, because I can't support something and do my due diligence to the taxpayers without having a thorough understanding of what we're dealing with. That being said, I see that we have representatives here from the fire department, sheriff's department, Bakersfield Fire Department. I don't want to ask you all to come down and give a, a, a whole speech on it. I would just like to know from each of you guys, uh, from your departments, does this system deliver what you guys need, this proposal for us? Looks like pretty much everybody's concurring.
Good afternoon, Supervisor Peters through the chair. Zachary Wells, Deputy Chief, Kern County Fire Department. We are in support of the proposal. Our critical infrastructure is more than aging. Just to give you a picture, our dispatch, um, is in dire need, excuse me, of the radio consoles. Uh, we can no longer procure parts, we can no longer expand to the consoles to put, uh, radio channels, uh, in front of our dispatchers, and the, uh, channels that we have currently available for operations, uh, hinder our day-to-day operations, and, uh, we're ready to move forward, uh, with your guys' support, and we look forward to, uh, evolving with this, uh, regional-based public safety communication network. Uh, we see this as a, a bright way forward, and we look forward to, uh, moving forward at your guys' convenience. Thank you.
Understood. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Don't want to put anybody on the spot, I mean, you're, you're free to share some comments if you'd like, but...
Chairman and Board, Brent Moon, uh, retired Kern County Fire. I worked for Kern County Fire for 35 years. I did a lot in communications, was a communications unit leader for emergency management fire teams, uh, setting up systems and operating them all over the country for emergencies. With that, I was very well, uh, involved in our communications while I was working, and I came back as a retiree to be on the evaluation committee, and I can assure you that the evaluation committee did a lot of good work, and, uh, I think you will find, um, that this is a good proposal, and it is what we need, and it is the best value, but we have great confidence that we would be able to come under that price that's quoted with all the, uh, work to upgrade, uh, infrastructure, uh, infrastructure we have, that's worst-case scenario, but this, uh, this is a good, uh, proposal. The way it was presented and perhaps the information you have, um, I wish that you had had more information, I think that is important, um, and I think that would, uh, give you a, a comfort of the work that went into this, because it is a good proposal, and, uh, the committee, um, really did work hard to give you the best solution.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
My name is Anissa Mitchell, Chief Deputy. Supervisor Peters through the chair. I just want to emulate the same kind of topic in terms of simplicity with our, with what we do in mass communications. Much like was stated, we have an outdated system, and the most important thing that matters is when that 911 call goes in, we have an answer and we're responding. Our systems are far outdated, and much like in our industry with everything we do with subject matter experts and panels, uh, we put together a great wealth of experience from multiple departments with years of experience, as we pulled one of our own from over 30 years of experience to do this. So with their proposal and what we see in the findings of that, we're, we are in action of, of accepting this proposal, and we backed this up. So we, I hear loud and clear, as far as terms of the, uh, last minute, uh, that, for department heads, that's going to change, that won't have to happen again for you guys, so you won't have in the last second, but this is a great proposal, and we support it.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Good afternoon, Larry McCurtin, Under Sheriff at the Sheriff's Office. Supervisor Peters through the chair. Um, this is a project that I know has been ongoing. I'm going to go way back when I was younger. I know at least seven, eight years ago, this, this project began being talked about. Um, we've participated with subject matter experts that are assigned to the committee. Um, I know of at least one that we have with the committee. As department, as second commands at our agencies, we rely heavily on our subject matter experts' opinions, and they opine that this system will be good for our county. With that being said, personally, not much experience with this entire process, however, from an end-user standpoint, I can say, over my career, being on hundreds of critical incidents and different assignments that I've held, our current radio system and communication system is outdated and is not reliable. Um, there are areas in this county that everybody is familiar with, that we do not have cellular service, so there's no communications, and we do not have radio service. And I know between fire department and county sheriff radios, if you listen to our outlined area radio traffic, it, many times, it is very difficult to understand if you can even get to that. I've been parts of incidents where we had to bring California Office of Emergency Services in with remote repeaters, the National Guard, um, and U.S. Marshal Service with other radios, just to communicate with staff, and even then, it still wasn't a reliable system when it was passed with our repeaters. So, um, with that, I know we've deferred to our subject matter experts that have been assigned to this. Thank you.
Yeah, we value your opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. One more?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and get back to my comments when you get done, though. All right. Thank you, sir.
Well, good afternoon and happy Tuesday. Board of Supervisors, I'm Lawrence Downer, retired in 2019. In March of 2019, was hired back July 2019 to work on this project. I was a member of the evaluation team, and I'm just going to read, otherwise, I'm not a good public speaker. I'm here to speak about the evaluation team, the process and the task of this team. The, the evaluation team was formed in 2019 and consisted of six voting members, one evaluation team administrator, and federal engineering, our consultant firm, a highly respected firm with two-way radio communications circles. The three members from the City of Bakersfield are representatives from information technology, city fire, and city police. The three members of the county represent general services, communications, fire, and sheriff. All these committee members hold positions with great responsibility and authority and are very familiar with the city and county needs. With the support of our consultant federal engineering, this committee evaluated the RFQ, RFP, and the best and final over. We read through all the documents, compared and assessed the design, evaluated and referenced projects, and selected contractors, plus questions to provide, plus questioned the, provided references, and held interviews with the vendors. The goal was not to dissect, select a low bidder rather than the best valuer, and to have a long partner relation in this project. Motorola made our concerns their concerns and found acceptable solutions. The evaluation team feels confident in having made the right recommendation. I think any delay, I feel like, I mean, I'm, my contract expires June 30th, I'm gone, I'm retiring again, and I believe so is Chief Moon. Those are two members who have 33, 37 years' experience. So I trust we really would recommend for you guys to approve this project and to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So, again, not to belabor the point, but the amount of information I feel like I received before this was not satisfactory, and I came in here having a very hard time supporting it with the level of information that I had. But hearing from the people that are going to use this and need it, uh, that are going to be putting it to use every day, I have a tremendous personal and professional respect for, uh, all of you guys, for all of our speakers, Ms. Martinez from CAO's office, uh, IT staff. So that being said, I'm going to support this, but I hope, uh, my frustrations with how this came forward are loud and clear. So, thanks.
Oh, go ahead. Okay, thank you. So I think, uh, we've been doing a lot of the treatment of this in real time, and, uh, thanks for everyone's patience, thanks for all your time these last seven years, and I appreciate the, you Supervisor Peters for bringing up the professionals, uh, your input and your scoring, I, I never question that. I'm questioning different things, but your professional opinion, I have the utmost respect for and I value, and, um, you know, I don't know what's going to happen in two weeks or a month, whatever, I think we would still have a good product and a good price, because it's a very lucrative contract. And having said that, I don't want to take the chance of, um, it going up costing more, because I think, uh, based on, based on the totality of everything, even though I haven't seen everything, that's, I'm really irked about that, too. I'm irked about this last minute, I'm not going to call it a drop, I'm not going to even call it by design, it just, it just happened. It was seven years, it came, this was the day that it came, but I am irked that it came on a Thursday at 2:00, which I didn't see it till Saturday because of my schedule. So the, this is a big contract. Please bring me something, I'm just speaking as one member, in advance, I get tons of routine briefings on big items, and, and I, and I appreciate that, and we all work on a, a lot of big items, and you do, this, this, I want to commend the staff, the staff does a great job of that, and we're a professional candidate, we always will be, but on this one, we fell short, and I, I don't want to belabor that, but that's, that's, that's my, my overall, um, rub here, um, was, was process and delivery. It's not, it's not about the, the product or you, you know, here in the audience. So, um, based on everything, uh, I'm going to pull back from my, um, extension request, because I think even with a two-week or one week, I mean, two-week or one month, um, there's, I'm not going to go back seven years. Again, we're not, we can't afford this from a public safety standpoint, a risk standpoint, um, because our, 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 uh, public safety and our citizens, it's predicated on communications, and you deserve the best. You deserve the best equipment that there is, whether it's A, product A, B, or C. Um, so I'm going to move back like Philip Peters did, and, um, that's, that's my constructive criticism, uh, pulling out, but I'm running to support staff's recommendation, and I think that they, staff has heard us loud and clear on expectations moving forward, but I, I think we're going to be okay. Uh, maybe we can have... Maybe we can have more meetings offline to go over this in terms of a debrief, what, what we did well, what we didn't do, but I'm ready to move forward as well. Thank you Supervisor Scribner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I appreciate my, my comments, I mean, sorry, my colleagues' comments about process and timeliness of information, so I appreciate that, I respect that. I don't think anybody is questioning anybody on the board's interest in, in seeing this current situation rectified with new equipment. Those dead spots that some of our public safety partners referenced, I know probably the bulk of those are in District 2, so those are my constituents that are impacted by those, those dead spots on our communication capabilities, and so this, this project is very important to me. And so Supervisor Perez made a motion on staff's recommendation. I know that we have three items that are supposed to be voted on separately, and so Supervisor Perez, if you would perhaps, if I could ask you to restate a motion on, on maybe item 35? I think I'll be happy to second that.
Thank you, Zach. I appreciate that very much, and I would like to also state that I appreciate what Supervisor Peters and Supervisor Flores have indicated about needing a briefing. I, I think you guys have heard loud and clear where the ball was dropped here. I think you're right, and I appreciate you pushing that way, and I appreciate that we can work through these matters together. Do we need to vote on them separately, Kathy? Okay, as to item number 35, thank you so much, Zach. I make a motion to 35.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Members, cast your vote.
I need my mic on. The motion is approved, all ayes.
I'll make another motion as to 36.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Members, cast your vote.
Thank you, Zach.
Motion is approved, all ayes.
Item 37, I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion and second. Members, cast your vote.
Motion is approved, all ayes.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Okay, see you. Okay, that brings us to adjournment. Having no additional items to consider, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn to June 20th, 9:00 AM.
So moved.
Okay, thank you, ready.